Okay, so before we get started, if you have a cellphone, please silence it or turn it off. I will convene the work session and roll call for Tuesday, February 7, 2017, for the Oregon City Commission Work Session. Call her on, please.
Commissioner Ie, here. Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg, here. Commissioner O'Donnell is absent this evening. Mayor Holliday.
Here. Does anybody have anything to add to the feature agenda?
Nope.
Seeing none, move on. Discussion items, 3A, 17-110, introduction of the city's new economic development coordinator, LeAnn Hoag. Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Mayor. Eric Underwood, Economic Development Manager for the city. I wanted to take this opportunity to formally introduce LeAnn Hoag, who is our new economic development coordinator. She originally hails from the Volunteer State. For those of you who don't know what that is, that's the great state of Tennessee, where she got her undergraduate degree at East Tennessee State University. She finally came to her senses and became a duck. And got her master's degree in community and economic development. Is that right? Let's see. Community and regional planning, I'm sorry, with an emphasis on economic development. She's worked for the past two years as the Director of Economic Development for the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce. And she has, in the past two years, she's gotten quite a bit of experience working with the traded sector businesses as well as startup businesses. So, we're happy to have that experience here on board. Few examples of some of the things that she'll be doing while she's here. She'll be coordinating the tourism plan project, coordinating the economic development strategy project, development of the economic development metrics and communication strategy, and assisting with business recruitment and retention efforts, and managing the department's social media efforts. So, I'm very happy to have her on board. She's a great addition. She's always, she's already made a great impact, and she's helped out quite a bit. So, with that, I'll just turn it over to you if you have any questions.
And what are you going to be doing?
That's a good question. I'll be making sure she gets all that done.
Sorry, Eric.
That's okay.
That's one of your lines.
You know, you're right. You're right. I can take it.
Welcome, LeAnn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay.
Okay.
Get to work.
So, next up, we have PC 17-014, legal land use training presented by Assistant Attorney Attorney Ms. Richter.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am prepared to do a little bit of this evening. And we've got a wide variety of experience levels on this commission. Some people have been around this land use review process for years, and some of you that are brand-new to it. So, I'm going to try to teach the folks who've been doing it for a long time something new, and also sort of get everyone up to speed. Before we get started, I want to let you know that there are land use proceedings going on now that are currently before you, and we are not going to talk about them in specifics in any way. So, if you have a question, I want you to encourage you to ask it, but keep it general. Let's not talk about any specific case. I may bring up some cases that have already been decided by the Land Use War Appeals, as sort of instructive examples, but those are past cases, and that doesn't, that is separate from the cases that are currently before you. So, I just want you to keep that in mind as we get started. So, I gave this presentation to the Planning Commission last week, or two weeks ago, and so this is a second chance for me to do it better, so I will try. The first thing I want to talk about are sort of the legal limitations on decision-making that control the land use world. And all the decisions that sort of you see come to you generally from the Planning Commission. The only time you see, you will see a land use decision that doesn't come from the Planning Commission, I mean, isn't filtered through the Planning Commission's filter, are staff decisions that get appealed to you. And there aren't very many of those. So, the world of laws that control our decision-making when it comes to land use come primarily from the municipal code, Chapter 17, the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan, including the transportation system plan, utility plans, master plans. And then those implement the statewide land use goals and the Oregon Administrative Rules in almost every regard. And so, because the city has local regulations, in most cases, those statewide land use goals and administrative rules fall out. So, when you see a staff report, you see a staff report that considers, that has a list of criteria that are usually comprehensive plan policies, land use regulations. You don't see the statewide planning goals discussed except for in cases of comp plan amendments, big legislative actions that you are planning for a new area, for example. In those cases, then those DLCD/LCDC rules, those are state agencies that promulgate land use rules to implement state law. Above that, we have the Oregon Constitution, Oregon Revised Statutes, and then federal law. And one of the things that comes up is what about other things? You know, what about Oregon Health Authority marijuana regulations? Those are laws, those are regulations, but they are not part of usually the purview of land use review. They have to be done, and often we'll see conditions that say you have to go get a Department of State lands' fill permit. You have to go do that, and the Department of State lands reviews that, but we don't review it because it's not part of the purview of those things in Oregon City. So, only, these standards only apply if the local regulations make them. So, for example, you have to have a valid Oregon Health Authority permit in order to have a business license to sell marijuana in the city. Whether or not you have one or not is relevant, but whether or not you meet the Oregon Health Authority criteria to get one is not germane to what we do. So, there are four, four or five different types of land use reviews in Oregon City. Type 1 decisions are the administrative decisions. You may recall that a year or so ago, two years ago, the city revised its code to make more things administrative, more things type 1. These are ministerial decisions that don't take discretion. And in those kinds of decisions, we provide no notice, we provide no hearing, we provide no appeal. Staff just decides if the fence is six feet tall, or if the setback is 12 feet, or if the building is 35 feet tall. Those sorts of clear and objective type 1 ministerial decisions staff makes. You never see those. The quasi-judicial decisions are classified as type 2, type 3, and type 4, and this is sort of the bread and butter of what Historic Review Board, Planning Commission, and UC. Quasi-judicial decisions are categorized based on the amount of discretion required. In other words, if you look at a spectrum of, this has to be six feet tall, a very clear and objective criteria versus a policy, is this a good policy for the city as being the most discretionary? 2 is closer to 1, 3 is in the middle, 4 is closer to the more policymaking types decisions. So, type 2 decisions are limited discretion decision-making. We give notice to the, mailed notice to the neighbors. The neighbors have an opportunity to comment. The planning director makes a decision, and then all those folks who commented, if they're not happy with the director's decision, can appeal that decision to the City Commission. Then there's a hearing. Type 3 decisions are the decisions that are made by the Planning Commission or the Historic Review Board with appeal rights to the City Commission. Type 4 decisions are typically plan amendments and zoning map amendments where the request relates to a particular property. We provide notice at a public hearing by the Planning Commission with a recommendation and final decision by the City Commission. Then the sort of fifth category is unlike administrative, unlike quasi-judicial decision is a legislative decision, and these are the policymaking decisions. These are, the city adopts a new concept plan, you know, planning for the future, the city adopts the transportation system plan. These are legislative decisions that are a Planning Commission recommendation and final decision by the City Commission, and a City Commission's review is de novo. So, I want to talk a little further about what the different obligations the City Commission has with regard to quasi-judicial decisions and legislative decisions. And quasi-judicial decisions, the commission is sitting as a judge. So, the city is unbiased, they are impartial, they disclose their ex parte contacts, they evaluate the criteria, and based on the facts, they determine if the criteria are satisfied. So, in these quasi-judicial decisions, you have me, or you have the Chair of the Planning Commission, really reading those oh-so-interesting 197763 disclosures, which put everybody in the meeting on notice that you are sitting as a judge, and you are going to be evaluating standards based on approval criteria. The decision is subject to review by an impartial tribunal. There is a raise it or waive it obligation, so people have to raise all the issues. If they don't raise them before you, to allow the city an opportunity to respond to the issues, they can't raise them at Luba. That's really important because it's not fair for folks to be blindsided at the Luba phase with new issues, right? So, we want to try to vet all the issues when the records open before the Planning Commission, and when the City Commission, the body charged with interpreting the approval criteria, has an opportunity to consider the question. The commission's review of appeals are on the record. On the record means you don't take new evidence. And that's the sort of, that's the rule. It's hard, I think that's a hard rule to implement, and because it's hard to separate the facts from the argument oftentimes. So, what we try to do is encourage folks to, when we're doing these limited reviews of a case in a quasi-judicial proceeding, is try to encourage folks to identify where they raised the issue below. And I encourage you, you know, when we're hearing these things, and you hear testimony, people concerned about runoff or concerned about riparian impacts, did you raise this below, and what did you say about it below? Because oftentimes, these things get conflated into other things, and there's this question of what was exactly presented below. New traffic numbers come in before you oftentimes, or newspaper articles, they get written about the Planning Commission's proceeding. All of those things contain new evidence often, and should not be before you. You are reviewing, should be reviewing a limited record and basically saying, yes, the Planning Commission did it right, no, they didn't do it right, it should be revised because our interpretation of the criteria is different. All of, the quasi-judicial decisions have to have adequate findings and conclusions, which means that it's on staff to present to you analysis. Your job is to tell the public and the applicant what a criteria means. Oftentimes, there's ambiguous language. You are to tell us what that standard means, and then how the facts show that the standard is satisfied or not satisfied. And that explanation are the findings. And every time any person brings up a new issue, we have to have findings addressing that issue. Either it's irrelevant, or it's, we have considered it and it's not reliable, or it is reliable, or we disagree because of this, or, so we have to address all of those issues. The decisions must be made in 120 days after an application is complete. So, we have a time limit on these types of decisions. Legislative decision-making, on the other hand, is political decision-making. It is the decision-making that you guys get paid the big bucks to come up with the bright ideas to make the city great, right? And so, there are no legal formalities in terms of hearing disclosures. You are supposed to be out in the community, talking to the public about what the city ought to do with, in regards to long-term planning decisions for the city. And so, that is all part of your decision-making role, and there is no limitation in the evidence. The obligation with regard to written findings is much lower because you are acting as a political body rather than a judicial body, and there is no decision-making timeline. Questions?
So, if on the quasi-judicial part of the process, they have to raise it or waive it, why are we getting new information hours before a hearing? I don't understand. I mean, shouldn't that have been raised at the Planning Commission?
If there is a, so there's a difference between evidence and argument, okay? So, evidence are facts. Argument can be raised at any time. So, I can come, I can come into the City Commission as an applicant and submit written materials that restate everything I said at the Planning Commission, and that will come in, as long as it was said before the Planning Commission, okay? But then there is a difference between the record being open and the record being closed, okay? When the record is open, evidence can come in. So, people submit new facts 10 minutes before the hearing, and they can do that. The record is closed, then they cannot submit new facts, and those new facts should be rejected. Whether or not it makes sense as a sophisticated strategic applicant to submit things to you 10 minutes before a hearing is a different question than whether or not it's legal to do that. See what I mean? So, here, so you've heard me or Bill read the quasi-judicial hearing disclosures. In a, in some, they provide for a list of the applicable approval criteria. They provide that the staff report has been prepared and made available seven days in advance. They require that test, they provide that testimony may be direct, must be directed to the criteria. This is a huge one, and one that I think that decision-makers don't put enough emphasis on. I don't think that we get a lot of testimony that is related to a criteria, and as somebody who works with staff to put together findings to respond to these issues, I wish that we did say to folks when they testify, I understand you have concern about fire department response times. What criteria do you think that this relates to? I understand that your church does really good work. What criteria does this relate to? Because what happens after the fact is we get all this testimony about this concern or that concern, and we don't have a box to put it in. And if a person can't connect it to a criteria, then it isn't relevant, it's not something that we can take into account when we make a decision. And that's just the, that's, we've identified criteria, and those are the things we have to weigh the decision against. We talked a little about a raise it or waive it. We say that you have to raise constitutional issues, and then a right to an impartial tribunal. I want to talk a little bit about impartial tribunal, and I know that Bill's talked to you about this recently, so I won't belabor the point, but you have an obligation to disclose ex parte contacts on the record, and to give the public an opportunity to question the decision-maker further. Ex parte contacts are facts gleaned outside the record from newspaper articles, site visits, or attending neighborhood meetings, for example. And what we know, we know a couple of things about Luba's jurisprudence with regard to ex parte contacts. They are limited to the application at hand. So, if, so you may have a relationship with an applicant for all sorts of reasons that have nothing to do with the application at hand. So, the fact that you share baking recipes with this person is not an ex parte contact that needs to be disclosed. So, we are limited to the issue at hand. We are also limited to ex parte contacts that occur between the time when the application is filed and when the application is decided. Okay? So, we're not talking about 20 years ago. And we're also talking about the, it's important to remember that there is nothing bad that can happen to you from disclosing too much, right? All you have to do is disclose. So, I encourage you to disclose. When in doubt, disclose. Because if you disclose, give the public an opportunity to comment, you are redeemed. So, and if no one challenges you, then they cannot object to an ex parte contact in the future. What I have seen happen is that folks disclose their ex parte contacts, and then it comes time for deliberation, and they say, well, you know, I was at this neighborhood meeting last week, and I heard folks talking about this, and I can tell you that this is really a problem. That is an ex parte contact that should have been disclosed at the beginning, right? So, when you know something, think about how you know it and why you know it, if you're going to, if that is going to be a critical part of your decision-making, if it is not something that is in the record.
So, just to clarify, so if we are anticipating that an agenda item is coming up soon before us, and there's a neighborhood association meeting, and they have the same thing on their agenda, you're saying it would be to our advantage to not attend that meeting so that, to avoid any ex parte contacts?
I'm not saying don't go. I'm saying go. By all means, go.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm clarifying here.
But, by all means, I want you to go. But, when it comes to the hearing, say, I went to the meeting. I went to the meeting, and I listened to what people had to say. And if people want to question you about what you learned at the meeting, or whether or not you have any strong feelings about it in advance, I mean, they can do that. But, if you don't disclose that you went to the meeting, then they don't know you were there, and they don't have an opportunity to question you about it. So, I mean, I think you should go, but just disclose it. Decisions also have to be free of actual bias. An actual bias is a predisposition rendering it impossible to make a decision based on the evidence and argument presented. And this is, this is different than a conflict of interest. Conflict of interest is you stand to benefit pecuniarily, or your, one of your relatives does, by the application being approved or denied. That, in those cases, you have to step down. If you have actual bias, you cannot make a decision based on the criteria, based on your strong personal views. You have to step down as well. But, actual bias is incredibly difficult to establish. In other words, courts have almost never found actual bias. And in a case out at the, out in Columbia County, a decision-maker ran on a platform of being opposed to liquid natural gas. That was his whole, he ran on that platform. And he gets elected, and he takes his seat the 1st of January, and he convinces the other Board of County Commissioners that they need to recall a previously made commission decision about a liquid natural gas pipeline. And they do. They recall it, and then they make a decision to deny it. So, they basically reverse the decision they had previously made with this new person on, on the slate, on the board. And what, and Luba found that there was actual bias in that case. I mean, the person ran with the intention of not supporting liquid natural gas. And the Court of Appeals overturned Luba's decision, saying that commissioners, boards of county commissioners are intent, are political beings, and they are supposed to be involved in the community, and they are supposed to take, they're supposed to take, have views. And they are, they are in a unique position because not only are they supposed to be political, they are supposed to be judges. Judges in circuit courts, we don't ask to be political, right? But you have to wear both hats. And so, as a result, the threshold for when you can show bias is much higher. And you may recall, in the historic properties appeal, there was a bias claim. And Luba said that the reams of paper that were produced to establish bias that was alleged against, all the commissioners? Maybe not you? Okay. I think all the commissioners didn't, Luba said, did not come close to reaching the level of bias. You have to be, you have to be really involved, and, 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 I mean, I don't even know, I can't think of a case in recent history where a court has found bias, so I can't even tell you how much it would take. But, it's a lot. And so, my advice is, if you don't feel comfortable, that this is not about, that bias is not about a legal, it's so much about a legal threshold, but as a personal and moral decision that you need to make for yourself. If you feel like you cannot set aside your personal views and make a decision based on the criteria, then by all means, step down, because we don't want you feeling compromised. But, that decision shouldn't be one that's based on sort of the legal threshold, it should be based on you personally, because that, that really ought to be the standard. A potential conflict of interest, you need to announce it, and then we can have a determination whether or not to participate. All of this stuff, you know, I encourage the Planning Commission, and I'm sure Bill would encourage you to, if you have any concerns about this, talk to us about it. When, any, you know, any matter that comes up, and we can come up with a solution, talk to Tony about it, and we can come up with a solution. You know, public meetings and public records requirements. One of the things that happens sometimes with public records and people submitting things into the record is that people aren't real clear. They use maps or things during their PowerPoint presentations, and they're not real clear about whether they want them in the record. So, staff has tried to be really diligent about whether or not things are in the record or not. So, that's something that we try to think about. The public hearing procedures, the staff report, as I said, is available seven days before the initial hearing. We have then the applicant's presentation, the testimony by interested parties, the applicant rebuttal, and then the deliberation. And so, a little, I want to talk a little bit in closing about sort of deliberation and the decision. So, you're, it's up to you to decide whether the standards are met, and that requires you to interpret the applicable criteria. And you need to be thinking about which, what are the applicable standards? I mean, has staff gotten their recommendation right about what the applicable standards are? You may hear testimony about other standards that should be considered. And, you know, it's our job to advise you on whether or not they are applicable or not, but at the end of the day, it is your job to determine which are the applicable standards, and then to interpret those standards. And then, it's our job to provide you with an explanation of how the facts satisfy the criteria. And these can't just be conclusions. They have to resolve all the conflicts in the flat facts and explain why one fact was deemed more reliable than another. And they have to address all the applicable criteria, and if a criteria is not applicable, the findings have to explain why this is not the state, the case. And then you have to also consider, in interpreting the standards, what the standards require. I mean, what is the level of compliance that is required? And that's often very discretionary. You think about a lot of these criteria we have about infrastructure adequacy, or timeliness, or orderly provision of infrastructure. Those are very discretionary, and to what extent is that required? Those are questions... Those are questions of interpretation that you get to decide and that we, as staff, have an obligation to provide you with findings that support that, whatever you decide. A decision has to be based on substantial evidence. In other words, there has to be evidence in the record to support the conclusions identified in the findings. It's up to you to weigh the evidence and make a choice when the evidence is in conflict. But, there needs to be evidence in support of the decision. And, again, just for an example, um, we talked about, the last time I was here, about the historic properties decision being remanded with regard to Goal Five. What Luba said was, "We didn't adequately explain how the riparian protections would be provided for, um, commercial development versus residential development." And that's a combination of lack of explanation and a lack of evidence to show that the river will be protected in the same way, whether it's commercial or whether it's residential. So, those were a combination of inadequate findings and substantial evidence defect. Finally, uh, the decision, if, if compliance cannot be achieved at the outset, compliance can be achieved with conditions of approval. Um, and they can be attached to ensure the applicable approval standards are or can be met. And, and, um, as somebody who's been around in Oregon City for longer than just a few years now, um, I can attest to how important it is that we have clear conditions of approval because I'm now the person that people go back to, to me and Tony, they go back to and say, "What did you mean when you said this?" And then I think, "I wasn't as clear as I should have been." Because I didn't, because we didn't think about that scenario. So, uh, again, the more attention and focus we put on these things at the time, the less trouble we have in the future, even if it seems complicated and unnecessary, is sort of what I've learned so far. So, um, and oftentimes, I feel like staff is in, has been in the trenches with the applicants and the opponents on this for a long way. So, we don't see, uh, the forest for the trees and you all are a new look at these decisions. And if things aren't clear to you, then they're not going to be clear to any of us 10 years from now. So, we need to work to make sure that we're more clear, um, in terms of, of explaining how we get from a criteria to an approval or a denial. So, I would open it up to, so that's sort of land use in a nutshell. I am happy to answer any questions. I would invite staff to add anything that they think I didn't highlight or should have put more emphasis on. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Hyde?
So, just so that, um, I have my analysis role clear. It's, it's not, it's not our responsibility to vet applications, from what I understand. So, it's staff's job to thoroughly go through the application and find all problems, issues, address the findings and the criteria and, um, that's their responsibility. But, now, as, as a commission though, it's, it's our responsibility to, well, I guess, to oversee all that, to think, think of things from the perspective of the public. Is this application in the public interest? Has all the criteria been met? Is there anything missing? Is that, is that, is all that correct and how, what would you add to it?
The way, the way I think I would start, when you get, let's say you get a planning commission decision. Where I would start is with the planning commission findings. And I would read them. And then, I would see if they make sense. And see what you think of this. And that is, that, that planning commission decision is usually an amalgamation of the staff report and the planning commission's analysis of the issue. And I would start there. And then, I would look at, um, you know, the opposition testimony. Whether or not, if the planning commission denied it, that would be the applicant, right? They would be the opposition. When I say opposition, I don't mean opposed to the development, I mean the other side.
Okay.
Um, because that's where, that's where the issues are going to come up. That's what's going to narrow the issues. Right? And then, from there, I think you need to start thinking about, what are the criteria that are in dispute? Is this about a Goal Five riparian resource? Or is this about a map issue? Or is this about sewers? And then go back and say, "What is the standard? What is the standard I'm trying, what is the standard we're trying to reach? Is it that utilities are going to be adequate? Is it that the development is serviceable?" What, and then, and then from there, you've got to sort of decide, is this about, is this about not knowing exactly how much service I need? Or is this about not having enough evidence? Right? Is this about, there's, there's just not enough evidence about how the services are going to be provided? And if the answer is, "There's not enough evidence," then we need to, staff needs to work to get you the information that you need. Maybe it's in the record and you don't know it. Right? Because you're not reading the whole record. I mean, the whole record is available for you to review and I certainly encourage you to review it if you want to. But, I think, you know, you've got to, you've got to focus. This whole process is about, there's the whole world of land use when this starts, when an application's filed. And we narrow and 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 we get somewhere. And so, you are sort of the final piece of that. Does that make, is that helpful?
Any else?
Thanks.
So, is it staff, staff's job then to review the application and develop findings so that, in theory, it would not be open to appeal by Luba? I mean, they're, they're trying to?
That's where we're trying to end up, yes.
Okay.
I think what you'll, you'll see too, is when we do our staff reports, and Laura can talk a little bit to this too, is, like Carrie was saying, it starts off with this, you know, a hundred, hundred applicable criteria. And some of them are pretty obvious that they're, they're met or they're not met and we put a condition on it. But, it really is trying to get down to, what are the main issues that need to be decided? And so, you know, we, we try to be concise in our presentation, so we don't necessarily present the whole thing. It's trying to focus on, okay, planning commission really debated whether this development is compatible with the neighborhood. Lot of subjectivity and whatever they found, we would, we would, we would discuss. And so, that would probably be something we would talk about in our presentation, trying to identify the issues and narrow it somewhat for you. But, there's been times where, you know, we've gave our presentation and it's like, "Hey, what about on page, you know, this criteria here? Can you talk about that a little bit more?" Because it's something that someone's read and either they have more questions about or, or, or have a different opinion about. So, you know, while we, we, we have a good idea of what the issues are, going through the process and try to present those to you because those are the ones that are of the most subjectivity or most disagreement. But, not to say that there couldn't be other parts of an application that are of interest to a commissioner when they're reviewing it.
Any else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yep, thank you very much.
Sure.
All right. So, moving on to, uh, seventeen dash one zero five, "Proposals to proceed with relocation of community development to the annexed building of Mount Pleasant Elementary School," or the former Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Ms. Turway?
Thank you very much. I also have with me our building official, Mike Roberts, as well. Um, we have a presentation for you. So, the community development department consists of the planning and building divisions and we're currently located at two twenty-one Malala Avenue. We've been in a lease for a while. We signed a ten-year lease and it is up in 2018. And so, we need to figure out what to do. And so, we have, um, what we're looking for tonight is just a general direction of if we should continue to move forward. We found it prudent to do a little bit of work and then ask if we're headed in the right direction before we spend a lot of work and a lot of time and money. So, that's where we're at right now. Is there any way to pinch the screen a little bit? So, we'll come back to the slide, but again, we're just looking for general direction on if we should proceed. All, all the information thus far is really high level. Can you flip it to the next slide, please? So, before we begin, I just wanted to talk a little bit about our existing location at two twenty-one Malala Avenue. It used to be the old Copland's Lumber Building. We're in the second story, um, the new second story since it used to be a one-story building. And here's a couple of shots of our existing facility. It's a little more than 5,000 square feet. On the left, you'll see our main hallway. We're sort of split on both sides of the hallway. On the side, on the image to the left, is our office. And then, on to the right, we have our meeting room, which is pictured, as well as a lunchroom. Can you change the slide, please? Couple more shots of our existing facility. There's our front counter from the staff side of it on the left, as well as back where our offices are. And, um, all of our code books are pictured there. Next slide. So, what we really want to talk about is Mount Pleasant Elementary School and specifically the annex there. Over the years, there's been a lot of consideration as to where we should locate next. And, um, the idea is that we get ahead of it, right? We, we figure out what we want to do and there's been a lot of vetting of lots of locations and we couldn't be more excited to present this opportunity that has come about. Next slide. I wanted to show you a little bit about the building and then we're going to get into some details. This is the front of the building. This is the, the view from the intersection of Lynn, Warner Parrot, Warner Milney, and Leland. Next slide. This is the other side of the building, which looks like the exact same pictures, the, we just looked at. They're very similar on both sides. Next slide. This is the general layout. Generally, there's a main corridor that goes through the building. It used to be, um, a building that had classrooms in it, so there's the main corridor. And originally, there was four classrooms, two on either side. I numbered these, Classroom One and Classroom Two, so you can kind of see some pictures down the road. So, this is generally how the layout is today. Next slide. Here's the main corridor going through the middle. You'll notice on the top of the screen, it gives you a general sense of where these pictures are. Next screen. This is what I named Classroom One. You, as you can see from the pictures which were taken today, that, um, the facility is underutilized, to say the least. There's a lot of open space and, um, a lot of, um, opportunity to really capitalize on the city investment here. This is Classroom Number Two. Again, a large open space at both of them. You'll notice in the picture on the right, there's the cabinet with like a sink or something. There's a back cabinet, but pretty much the room is a large open room. Next slide. So, the other half is used as a gym. It's more, um, a CrossFit gym, so not as many workout equipment as you would think is a traditional gym. But, it's what, just one large open space. What used to be the, the two classrooms, the middle wall's been opened up, so it's one large space. And, um, so, with this opportunity, we wanted to figure out a few things. One, we have the city asset. We're paying rent in our spot, in our location. And so, aside from investigating the other locations, for this investigation, we want to know, will it even fit? Will, will it meet our needs? Is the structure in good shape? And how much money is this going to cost us at the end of the day? So, we got a couple of quotes. One was for a lot of money, um, the $23,000 from McKinsey. And then, we got another quote for CCS Engineering for $4,500. And, that is a lot lower. And the reason is because we have such good building division staff who stepped up and we had a lot of, uh, staff time trying to figure out what the programming of this would be. So, where could we fit and how will that work is our relationship to the copier and the front counter and that kind of thing. And then, also, a draft of the interior layout, just to make sure. Next slide. They went so far as to go count all of the segments of our cubicle walls and put them in a design to know that we didn't really have to buy a lot of more cubicle walls because we're trying to do this in a really fiscally responsible way. We're not going to scrap everything and start over. We're trying to use as much as we can with what we've got. So, here's a draft layout and it will change, I'm sure, um, a few times over. But, it has, it uses that central corridor. I think the central corridor is important for a lot of reasons. One is, right now, the parking is primarily in front of the building, between the intersection in the building. Well, one thing to note is that in our TSP, there's a big roundabout there and that will take out all the parking on that side of the building, um, when it is installed. So, there's two fronts to the building. The building's sort of split on the interior, so we're sort of straddling using both sides. So, staff is really geared towards one side and then there's break room and a conference room on the other side. This site is a little over that 7,000 square feet, so it leaves some extra space for whatever and, in the future, a little room for growth. So, we did have that layout again. It's using almost, it's using all of our furniture and, um, which is in really good shape. And, so, we wouldn't have to get many new furniture to fit. But, really, the point of this is to make sure that it would programmatically work for us. Next slide. So, the engineer came to the site a few times and started digging around a little bit to make sure that the structure itself was in good shape. Are we, are we thinking about putting money into something that's just going to fall down in a couple of years? And the answer was no. It looks like, from this high-level estimate, that it has strong bones. The foundation's good, the structure itself is good, um, there's a good boiler, there's some, some parts of it that are really good. Next slide. However, there's some things that we need to fix. Deferred maintenance is something that, um, I, as, as cities are familiar with, schools are familiar with too. So, it needs a new roof, it needs new siding. Also, it needs some type of interior remodel for us to fit. And, so, there's a list of things that need to happen in order for us to fit in that facility. And, there is a cost associated with that thing. Again, this is the rough order magnitude cost. This is a cost estimate primarily based off square footage. And, so, it's high. And, it is conservative. And that's what we want, is a conservative number, rather than one that guesses low and turns out to be high. So, it's a little over a million dollars, but you can see it's actually only 850,000, but there's those soft costs and contingencies. It confirms what we know, that construction right now is expensive. There's more work than there is people to do the work. And, um, so that means a higher price tag. The cost of this million dollars is about the same as seven and a half years of rent in our current facility. If we were to stay and pay the same rent for seven and a half years, which is doubtful on its own, that it wouldn't go up. If you were to account for what we anticipate the operating costs to be at this facility, which is about four grand a month, to mow the lawns and to pay a cleaner and to pay the utility bill and things like that, then it's about 11 years worth of rent if you combine the two. The good thing about this is Chief Band has been so nice as to not charge us rent. So, we're not charging one city department rent to pay to another city department. What we're paying is the cost of mowing the lawn, which is higher than you'd think. But, um, we are capitalizing on our assets, we're investing in this building with these strong bones.
So, is the chief making him mow the entire lawn?
Yes.
Good deal, huh?
Good deal. So, um, is this a wise investment? So, there's, there's a, we're trying not to think, you know, this budget cycle, next budget cycle. Long-term thought process is that there's phenomenal cost-saving from us bouncing around locations, doing tenant improvements every 10 years or something. And, there, we're investing in city facilities to be offices, whether they accommodate us or somebody else, it's still office space. And, the location is pretty good. A lot of our development is, you've noticed, is on the hilltop. And so, this location would probably increase our parking. From our current facility, we receive a fair number of complaints about parking. And also, it would create this single-story facility for people that have easier access into it. But, more or less, it's closer for, uh, the inspectors go driving around from place to place. It's closer for customers to come and see us. We could, um, when the police facility gets built, we can use their conference room. So, we can have some sort of synergy and shared facilities there. There's room for, um, future expansion and, um, that, because parts of the building... There's room for, um, future expansion and, um, that because parts of the building are in such good shape, you could phase that investment over multiple budget cycles if you want to. So, the roof and the siding, they need to be replaced. They're probably good for this budget cycle. They are good for this budget cycle according to our engineer. We could do that the, the next budget cycle, not 2017, 19, but the one after that. And, um, there are a couple of challenges, again, coming up with the money, which is what Mike and I are tasked with, so you don't have to worry about that. Um, we'll do that for you. And then there's, right now, currently Merrill Hirst is in a lease for the school portion, not this portion. Their lease is up in June. And then the roundabout we talked about, um, there would be some planning that's required. Do you want to flip the slide? In order for us to utilize the facility, there's a big process. And you, it would come to you in a couple of ways. You would need a zone change and a comprehensive plan amendment and a conditional use and a code interpretation and a site plan designer review. So, this whole list of planning-related regulations that would happen through a public forum to make sure that we meet the applicable criteria. And then lastly, what we want to think about is our comprehensive plan. Can you go back one? Sorry. Which is our guiding document for the city. And there are a fair number of comprehensive plan policies that talk about good access for customers. Um, there's transit lines here, so there is good transit access. There is, it's centrally located within the city. And there also talks about maximizing and leveraging our city resources. So, that synergy when we locate near another facility, um, is helpful there as well. With that, next slide. We, at this point, we're just looking for direction to proceed since we did this high-level analysis. Should we keep digging in? Are there any questions about this analysis?
If I may real quick, before I get to the questions. Commissioner O'Donnell had a, had a good question that he sent me. And the ZKS, um, information that was provided in looking at the options for the building, there was a Plan B that was, uh, about 450,000, um, but it excluded, I'm sorry, trying to get to it right here. Some of the improvements, it would be selective replacement of siding. It would, um, not do the roof removal, which they said is not an ideal solution at this. But at this time, there are no obvious roof leaks. Um, the conference room, uh, within the footprint was removed. Improvements to the front entry were removed. Uh, air conditioning to the building has been removed. So, while they looked at that option, it's, it was difficult to recommend not addressing some of the envelope. And, you know, we worked through the summer without air conditioning in that building. So, um, while we, we had them look at a, a, a scaled-down version, you could probably, we could probably defer some of these, but we really couldn't recommend not addressing this, um, sooner rather than later, just because of the potential increased costs of deferred maintenance. If we do let the roof get to a condition where it's leaking or you have water intrusion in the siding, which leads to mold, it was just really difficult to recommend that option. Um, you know, the air conditioning seemed like a necessity over the summer months for employees and clients. Um, you know, we need a conference room at, at community development with the amount of pre-apps and other meetings that we have there. Um, so, uh, we, we did have them look at that cost estimate. Um, it, it wasn't something that we would, we would recommend, though it's certainly something the commission can direct us to do.
Mr. Megaberg?
I have a couple of questions. One was, what is it zoned now and what would it need to be rezoned to?
It's zoned a variety of residential zoning designations and it would have to be rezoned. We think the best would be institutional with the conditional use attached, um, for the police station. The police station is a conditional use in residential zones. Um, and so, it would be institutional, which allows government offices. And then this conditional use and code interpretation would be to allow police to live there as well.
Okay. Um, the second question is, it looks like you're going to leave the gym as is. Is, that wouldn't be retrofitted? You would just be retrofitting the remainder of the building? Or would you be, what's the vision for the gym space? Because it's a fairly large part of the building.
It is. So, at this point, it's leave it. And then the police, it's, so it's the police's gym, so they could continue to use that space. And it's on the other side and so, it, it's fine for noise or vibration. We sort of worked out some programming. This, this draft may change a little bit, but at this point, it's, we don't need the, the space for community development. And we don't have the money to renovate it if there's not a use or, uh, an intent to use it right now. So, it could be future space for other departments to move up there as well. It's just space to grow.
So, the reason I asked the question is that I remember fairly recently that, um, Mr. Lewis was saying that it might make sense to have the portion of engineering that works well with building and, and planning, that they be co-located somehow. And it seems like an obvious fit to me.
Mm-hmm.
If you have the space.
We have talked about that a little bit with Mr. Lewis. And it doesn't seem that though, though there's space, there's not enough to accommodate the whole apartment, but we can continue to, um, explore that.
So, can, I want to just add a couple of things. One, one on that and then something, and then something else, just kind of a big, a big-picture thing. Um, so just on the space, it, it is a gym that gets used a lot in that fitness is a pretty big thing, um, that I push in our department for obvious reasons. Overall wellness and just, I, I think our cops need to be in, in good shape. And, uh, it gets used a lot. It is not just, that's important enough. It also gets, we do a lot of training there, um, defensive tactics, different things that are acquired, uh, every year for officers to do. That gets used a lot as training space. There, um, enough on that. That, um, the other thing that I think is important, looking at, at kind of the sticker of, of what this is, the, the whole, when you look at the whole project, when we had the concept design done, there was a Phase One and Phase Two. We're lucky to have this flat 8.3 acres in the middle of the city. It's a great piece of ground. If we didn't buy it, developers would probably be all over it to put houses, apartments or, or whatever there. And I think the community really liked the idea, it was obvious, of the city owning this. So, what we looked at was not just PD, but PD and then in 20, 30 years, what other uses are we going to have? So, we ended up with this Phase One, Phase Two, which was police department and then a plan where someday City Hall could go. Because that'd make a lot of sense if we had a lot of money. But, when we were looking at this building, before we kind of started this plan, there were, you know, there was some siding thing that we had to replace, three, four, some thousand dollars. And then, and another siding thing that was more money. So, we started looking at, okay, if everything goes the way we want it to with the police building, we're looking at, you know, 15 to 20 years to pay that off. There's probably no conceivable way, unless we win the lottery in this city, that we're going to have money to build a new City Hall before that. So, that's something that other people are going to have to do. Knowing that, if we're looking at 15, 20, 25 years of a really strong building, um, it's probably smart for us to invest in it. So, I, that, that million dollars or whatever that is, it's not, we're not going to pay it off and then demolish it. It's, that building's going to be there for 20, I'd say at least 20 years. So, it's, it's a pretty good investment when you look at the, the big picture of what we're going to do with that site.
Oh, there you are. Commissioner Shaw?
Well, I think it's a, uh, a great project for us. And I would, uh, really like us to thoroughly investigate the financial part of this, to go to do the, the full project and the million-dollar thing. Because I hate to think about a leaky roof, uh, a year from now or. And, and I know working in air conditioning is, uh, going to help our staff be a lot more productive here. So, um, I guess the one thing I had to, and it, it maybe was mentioned in here, I probably saw it, but maybe, uh, Mr. Roberts, could you tell me about any of the seismic upgrades we're going to have to do at all? Because we kind of went through this with the, uh, police building when we were supposed to be able to use that whole building when this all happened and come to find out that it didn't work that way. So, could you kind of fill me in on that?
Well, this is a little, excuse me, this is a little bit different than a police station because of the, uh, category. So, a police station's considered an essential structure and it has to be a little more, it would have to be considerably more seismic retrofitted than current police station. Ours is not quite so much because it's a general office building. There is some, but until they start getting into it and do a little more, uh, destructive investigation, they can't really tell us what it is, other than some of the siding and the roof, where they're going to replace that, there's going to be some lateral bracing in there. So, we talked about adding some windows and replacing windows. And when they also replace the siding, that's going to give it its sheer value. So, we'll get it back there. And there's also going to be some, when they opened up the ceiling, uh, doing some roof-to-wall connections. So, that's where we'll get it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Megaberg?
I also support investing in this building. The location is great. Um, it's part of a long-term campus for the city. Uh, it's not an unattractive building. It's meets your size needs and future expansion. So, I guess I would support it and also encourage you to do whatever you need to, to make it energy-efficient so that it's the long-term operating posture as low as possible. If you put a solar roof or whatever it is, you know, consider all those because you are the Development Services building and you should be reflecting the standard that you want other developers to adhere to.
Commissioner Rydick?
That's a very good point. I, I would agree with that. I think that, um, I, I too am in favor of this building, mostly because it's, we're investing in our own property. And I, I love the, uh, the centrality of the, of the location, um, that, and the accessibility to the public. You know, um, it's great visibility right there on the corner, um, or on the roundabout, whichever it is to be. And no matter where you go, there's going to be setup costs and, and, um, investment. And at least where, we would be investing in, in our own property rather than in somebody else's. Um, and I really like the fact that, uh, you're willing to move all of the furniture over so that that cost would be reduced. I don't, there, there, you'll probably need to make some purchases of something, but, um, that's a, not an expensive cost, so. Anyway, I'm just supportive of it.
Okay. Well, I, I too, um, support the project. It's always a frustration of mine that, uh, that, that we don't build things to fit everybody the first time. Particularly disappointing that we built this place and we're already, already knowing that we couldn't put your group into it on day one. So, understanding that the building is going to be around for another 20 or 25 years and it will continue to be able to be used by somebody, um, you know, both the library and City Hall bounced around and moved around and rented and all sorts of things. And I, I just think it's time for us to, to look at a plan where we can get everybody together on the same site. But I think this is a decent start. So, you have your direction.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Um, just one update tonight from, uh, Mr. Lewis. So, you may have gotten an email. I don't, I'm not sure if we actually got that email out, but you may have gotten an email on this topic. We wanted to talk again about the Malala Avenue grant and, uh, did you make that announcement? Listening public, so I know you're informed about it. But on February 2nd, Metro Council awarded Oregon City a $3,800,632 grant. Did I say that right? For improvements on Malala Avenue between Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213. The city will provide a local match of $4 million. Um, we've also received an additional $21,000, uh, from TriMet to facilitate some of their, um, stop and, uh, improvements to, or enhancements to their stops. So, the Metro Regional Flexible Fund Allocation Grant, um, Program identified 10 projects totaling $25.81 million for active transportation and complete streets. These projects make it safer and easier for people to walk, ride bicycles and get to transit. Um, the much-needed improvements along Malala Avenue corridor include reconstruction of the potholed pavement. Now, this grant money isn't going to be spent, or we're not going to see it right away. So, the potholes that are out there today from the winter weather are not the potholes that we're talking about, but we know that, um, long-term, we're going to have more potholes on Malala Avenue. We'll be fixing those when we get the grant funding. We'll be taking care of potholes between now and then as well. Um, continuous bike lanes along the entire corridor, construction of missing sidewalk segments, 10-foot-wide continuous ADA-compliant sidewalks on the west side of the corridor, ADA-compliant sidewalk ramps at both sides of the corridor, pedestrian-level street lighting on the west side of the corridor, street trees along the west side of the corridor, transit amenities along both sides of the corridor, street furnishings, benches, trash cans, receptacles, crosswalks at transit stops, what we call access management. So, trying to control some of the multiple driveways along that, um, section of roadway to keep, uh, less conflict points as people move in and out of driveways. So, that's what that's about. New traffic signals at Clermont and Gaffney Lane. Um, three new safe, safety pedestrian, uh, actuated signals. So, like what we have here in front of the library, we'll, uh, our intent is to get three of those in at Adrian Way, Chardes Drive and Garden Meadows Drive. Stormwater quality management facilities and a new Welcome to Oregon City Gateway feature at the south end of the corridor. So, that area across from the community college, we've got some funding planned for that as well. Um, we also want to reach out to the, um, property owners along the corridor that see what other kinds of funding we might leverage for even more improvements along there. It's a dream that I have that we could actually underground the, um, overhead utilities. That wasn't part of the project cost, but, um, we're going to work diligently to see if there aren't some solutions there, at least to clean it up, if not completely eliminate it. So, um, these grant funds are programmed to be available in 2019. We understand how important these improvements are to the community and surrounding area. We want to get it done sooner. So, we're going to, um, I guess, another good piece of information that I didn't share in this is that the, most of the grant funds are federal funds. Um, they've figured out a way to fund as many projects as they could. And part of that solution was to de-federalize, um, two or three projects on the list, and ours was one of them. And so, what that means is, uh, instead of meeting a federal standard for project documentation and project delivery, we're going to be able to meet our own local standards and work with Metro. We don't know exactly know, uh, what our agreement with Metro is going to be to, um, spend those fundings. I'm sure they're going to have conditions as well, but the, we're, uh, we're, um, fully expecting them to be a much-reduced threshold, so we won't have to jump through as many hoops as we would if they were federal dollars. So, we're excited about that. We're, we're hoping to reach out to Metro to see if we can't get those funds earlier than what was projected for the federal funds so that we can get started with the project and maybe leverage our own funding, part of our match, spending that early. And then if the funding through Metro doesn't come available until, till 2019, have a, have a project construction plan, bid document ready to go so that we could, uh, spend the construction dollars when they become available. So, that's our plan. We're excited about it. It's huge news. Um, it's been a tough pull. If you remember, we tried to get this grant, uh, a couple of years ago and weren't successful. But because of, uh, the project scored technically really well and then we had a lot of community support from just their online survey and then some public testimony that was made at the county as well. So, we're happy about it.
Great. Good job, Duncan.
Question?
Would you, um, continue the look of Seventh Avenue up through this stretch of, um, Malala Avenue as well? Or would it be a, a different concept?
We have a corridor plan. We'll be looking at those kind of decisions and whether or not we carry that full extent of Seventh and carry on the stuff that's been done on Malala. But we're looking at that.
Okay. Thanks, sir. That concludes updates for tonight. All right. Any other for the good of your order? And we're adjourned.